Messed up. We're good. This is Baltimore City Budget and Appropriations Committee. We are here today for Council Bill 18-0082R investigative hearing. Baltimore City Public Schools Enrollment Task Force. I ask everyone who's here today to please speak clearly into the microphone. This hearing is being televised on Comcast Charm TV, Channel 25, as well as on charmTV.tv. First, we are joined by Council President Bernard C. Jack Young, two to my left. To my immediate left is Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District, Vice Chair of the Committee. To Council President Young's left is Councilman Brandon Scott, Member of the Committee from the 2nd District. To his left, Councilwoman Shannon Steen from the 13th District, Member of the Committee. To her left, Councilman Ed Risinger from the 10th District. To his left, Councilwoman Sharon Green-Milton, Vice President of City Council from the 6th District, Member of the Committee. And we are joined by Karan Banks, representing Mayor Pugh, as well as Poetry Deal. We have Kara Kuntz, Michael Huber, and Lester Davis from Council President Young's office. Before we begin, before we begin, I'd like to pass it over to Council President Young for some introductory remarks.
Thank you, Councilman Costello, and good morning to everyone gathered here for this important discussion with our Baltimore City School community. Dr. Santalisa, thank you for this background information and for the hard work and dedicated dedication to steering our public school system. This council looks to you as its partner, and we see our job as helping the school system better prepare our city's bright minds of today and tomorrow. With that said, I must say how disappointed I was to learn that our school system had engaged in a much-needed discussion about the direction of student enrollment, which had a direct negative budgetary consequences on our ability to educate young people by forming a task force of stakeholders that did not include equitable representation from the African-American community or Hispanic population, which together accounts for more than 90 percent of the school's total population. And this is not something I take lightly. In early 2017, after the citizens of Baltimore overwhelmingly approved my historic Children and Youth Fund, I established a task force of stakeholders to help the City Council develop grant-making criteria. I was intentional about bringing long-shutout voices to the table, but I didn't just want them there as props. We made the intentional decision to empower these varied voices with real decision-making authority, and I believe we developed a stronger set of criteria for the Children and Youth Fund as a result. This lesson crystallized the importance of consulting with grassroots voices early on in the process. Since I called for this hearing, I've heard from a number of individuals who've wondered why this council would waste its time digging into what the school system has referred to as an advisory group. My response to that, this council represents the citizens of Baltimore, and there's a vehicle for inspection that is uniquely positioned to dig into matters like these. I support our public system with my words, but more importantly through my action. My wife and I put our mouths where, my wife and I put our money where our mouths were and sent both of our now-grown daughters to Baltimore City Public Schools from elementary through high school. We sent them to our neighborhood schools, which at the time was classified as failing. We did not seek to use my position to enroll our kids into the better schools. We partnered with the principal and spent time in the schools that our daughters attended. My two girls are both college graduates with advanced degrees, and my wife and I are proud that they were educated in our public school system. So when I ask questions about the direction of our public schools and the decisions that are made, I do it with a great deal of care and respect for the many educators who are working hard to teach our young people on a daily basis. With that being said, Dr. Santalisa, I'd just like to ask you a few questions. And the first question is, how many of the 22-member task force have students currently enrolled in Baltimore City Public Schools?
Dr. Santalisa, if you could come up. We've also been joined by Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District. Dr. Santalisa, we're going to hold off on the presentation if you could get right to Council President Young's questions.
Okay, so you don't want the presentation.
No, you can go to do the presentation, then I'll ask the question.
Yes, sir. Okay, yes, let's do the presentation. We all have a copy of this and disseminated this in advance, so if you could please keep the presentation to five minutes, that would be appreciated. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, and good morning. And please feel free to assist with the timer if you believe that I'm getting too long, Chair. I figured you would welcome and relish that opportunity. So, good morning, everyone. It's good to be here with you. What I'm going to do is provide just a brief overview of where we are with the Enrollment Task Force, keeping in mind that yesterday, the full complement of first round of recommendations were in fact presented, so those will not be reflected in today's presentation. This is designed to provide you with context from which you are certainly free to ask questions, but just know this will not include the full complement of recommendations that I received yesterday. So, with regards to where we are with enrollment, as City Council President Jack Young just referenced, really, the challenge of enrollment is intimately tied not only to the vitality, financial vitality of the school system, but frankly, the vitality of the city. It's intricately linked to the population of the city, as well as it is the education of our future workforce and future citizenry. With that, I want to note that one of my first charges upon assuming the position of CEO within Baltimore City Public Schools was in fact to be proactive and to develop a series of actions to help reverse that trend and build more high-quality options for families seeking to educate their young people in Baltimore City Public Schools. So, I convened last fall an enrollment task force, which is one of many task forces that is CEO. I convene on a variety of issues, such as bus transportation, such as operational issues. So, this is not an outside way that I receive information or begin with that. Just a reminder of where we are with regards to city schools' official enrollment. We've been on a downward trend since school year 14, 15, and so these attempts, again, are really to address that, oop, that trend. There we go. Moving along quickly, what I'd like to note is that this task force was part of a collection of initial actions to begin to address enrollment challenges within city schools and to boost enrollment. Three that are highlighted here, one, our summer door-knocking campaign in which we partnered with the Baltimore Teachers Union and the City of Baltimore. We went door-to-door last year. We had teachers who were specially trained, who had frankly, high success with regards to their relationship with parents and families. They went door-to-door, targeting neighborhoods where we believed that there were under-enrolled families in early grades, as well as young people that we could re-engage in Baltimore City Schools, namely, a number of adolescents who either had dropped out or in danger of dropping out. And that really set the foundation. We were able to increase slightly some enrollment from those efforts, but we really saw that as a partnership that was going to lay the groundwork. I'd like the City Council to know that we are continuing with the summer door-knocking campaign this summer as well. The Blueprint for Success that many of you have heard about already, that was a result of a citywide listening campaign from students and families about what they thought their young people, our young people, needed. And so, the Blueprint for Success reflects a renewed focus on the whole child and need to buttress our performance in literacy academically through the system, if we really do want all young people to be successful, and supporting leadership. The third piece that we know, and has been verified from an analysis of the data that the Enrollment Task Force has done, is that one of our largest areas to really increase enrollment within Baltimore City Public Schools is within pre-K and kindergarten. Those families who the system, who our schools, have missed traditionally in terms of outreach have been a focus, and our investment over a long period of time in pre-K has yielded not only benefits in terms of the quality of programming available to families, but also recognition from the state and frankly, the performance level of our young people in these grades. So, again, I just want to emphasize that this Enrollment Task Force is not a one-off, but it is part of a series of initiatives to improve and increase enrollment in city schools that, again, I was charged with upon assuming the role of CEO of city schools. So, again, here, what you'll see is a list of some others, just for information. If city council members have questions about any of these initiatives, we have a middle school work group that has been working on improving our middle grades programming, again, based on what we've heard from parents. 21st Century Buildings, that this city council played a key leadership role in making sure we secured the funding for those new buildings. Some other pieces, improving customer service across the district, and expanding programs for gifted and advanced learners and for students learning English. We're very proud of the fact that when we did a mapping, an equity-based mapping, I might note, based on ZIP code within the city, we found that there was a dearth of these kinds of programmings in traditionally underserved communities in Baltimore City, and we're proud that we have increased the number of these programs, as well as programs that frankly, are attractive to families across the demographic spectrum. With regards to the Enrollment Task Force, really, the convening of the work groups was really to recommend a first slate of implementation strategies for increasing enrollment in city schools. The recommended strategies were really intended to come from engaging a diverse group of stakeholders and drawing on their expertise. I will note here that as in any effort, the initial work, and I received very helpful feedback from a number of groups, that they wanted to be included, thought they should, and the great part about a CEO's task force is that it does not have an end date. The intent was for this to be a springboard for further work with community members. We did have representation from a number of grassroots organizations with regards to our focus groups. So, Baltimore Algebra Project was part of that. Teachers Democracy Project, Youth as Resources is just a sampling of organizations that we partnered with to get ground-level feedback on enrollment. More than a third of the members are people of color, and in addition to several nonprofits, Bell Edison represents one of the prominent community groups that were part of this effort. So, again, I have said publicly, and will say again here to the City Council, that no initial working group includes everyone, but what there has always been a commitment to, and I think I have a track record of that in the two years that I've been sitting in CEO, is that I do listen, do improve, and we will have ongoing work groups around this, around this work of enrollment. Increasing enrollment in city schools took many years to get to this place, many years prior to my arrival, and frankly, tangentially reflects the city's challenge, which I know the city council and the mayor are working diligently on with regards to population increases and decreases within the city. So, we are seeing this as an initial effort. We have always seen it as an initial effort. We did have some representation, but again, we've already subsequently had folks who have reached out, who want to be part of follow-up work in this area. And then finally, just by way of recapping, and I know that Councilman Costello was going to make sure that my timer goes when it needs to.
Three minutes ago, but...
Oh, you're so good. You didn't wave at me. So, with regards, just to Slide 9, I wanted to refresh everyone's memory that the work groups and focus groups were public relations and marketing, enrollment strategies, customer service, and then we had a variety of focus groups that did include parents, teachers, principal supervisors, principals, students, and community members. And then in terms of what we've learned, what I'd like to say just on that is, again, I have a full slate of recommendations that I received yesterday. I asked questions. I will be receiving from each of those committees a two-to-three-page summary of their initial findings, and I will be reporting that on an upcoming board meeting, and am more than happy and willing to make that available to City Council as well. But again, that work group presentation was just yesterday. And those are the next steps. Again, we had always planned, we had always worked with the Family and Community Engagement Office to continue this work, but I will stop now since Councilman Costello already gave me the gift of three minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Santalisa. President Young?
Thank you. Dr. Santalisa, how many members of the 22-member task force have students currently enrolled in Baltimore City Public Schools?
What I would need to do, Council President, is actually go back. I don't want to do that off of the top of my head. We had a number of people yesterday who actually referenced their role, both as parents of students in the system, grandparents or past parents of students in the system, but not all.
Okay. All right. Now, we're doing this outreach to try to get more students into the system. How many Baltimore City Public School teachers actually have their kids enrolled in Baltimore City Public Schools?
I do not know that, Council President. I will have to get you those figures and circle them back.
I would appreciate that, because as part of this strategy, you know, the teachers need to also show that they have confidence and faith in the system in order for parents to really have confidence and faith to send their kids to the schools. Because from what I've learned, and I don't know how true it is, most of the teachers in the school system really don't send their kids to the Baltimore City Public School System.
Well, one of the things that I will say, Council President, that I am very confident about is that we have a large number of schools where large percentages of teachers in those schools, where they feel confident that the performance is where it needs to be, actually do send their children and grandchildren to those schools. So, I would, my guess would be, and again, we will certainly get back to you, sir, with the overall enrollment pattern, but we actually, Live Baltimore did a wonderful profile of one of those schools where 80 percent of the faculty there send their children to the school. We have a number of teachers I talked to at Barclay who do. We have a number of grandparents who work in a variety of schools across the city. What we have found, Council President, is that, very similar to the public, when teachers know that there is a quality education being provided in the school where they send their children to, they are more than happy to send their children either to the school where they work or another Baltimore City Public School. And one of the pieces of data that the Enrollment Task Force helped us to see yesterday is that if you monitor some of the social media, some of the informal networks that families and parents use to make their decisions, there is not an overwhelming kind of bailing on city schools. One of the things that we have to work on, that we know from yesterday, is making sure that the knowledge about where our quality schools are gets out, and that misinformation is not passed in informal networks. And that's something that we as a system have to do a better job on, but again, I'm more than happy. I can name you individual schools, again, in various sectors and districts in the city. It's not all, you know, people like to pick on Roland Park, but there are schools across this city where teachers, where professionals, where central office folks send their young people. I had a member of central office ask me...
Dr. Santalisa, can we...
Go ahead.
Do you got all the pictures you need? Are you good?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I can turn off the flashes.
That's okay. I just, you flash her about nine times. Thank you, Dr. Santalisa.
So, but we can get you the specific data, but I will tell you, anecdotally, teachers, school employees tend to follow the rest of the city. Where they feel that there's a high-quality school, they will place their children, and where they have questions, which again, is part of my job, is to make sure that we have increased quality. And we have heard that across demographics. It came across in the enrollment task forces, initial results. One of the things that they saw, Council President, is that, and it was particularly with across demographics, racial demographics of families, that the pursuit of quality is the number-one concern for parents. They want a welcoming culture. They want a plethora of activities and offerings, and they want to know that there is a college preparatory or post-secondary preparatory course of study, and that whether you live in Cherry Hill, whether you, you know, live in Sandtown, families want a safe, nurturing environment, and that has cut across every demographic.
Okay. I know that you're trying to put together some of the best schools around, but I think all of our schools should be quality schools.
Agreed.
Simply because parents wouldn't have to be trying to figure out who they know to try to get their kids in these various good schools, whether it's a teacher, whether it's an elected official, or anybody. All of our schools should be quality schools.
Agreed.
So, whatever we can do to help you make all of our schools quality schools, and how we can encourage people to really look at our school system, because I know we have a great system in some of our schools, not all of them, but we should be able to be at the point where all of our schools are great, where all of our teachers are highly motivated, just like the teacher yesterday, was it Hallie?
Yes, yes.
Where the students felt that this teacher was just the bomb. And if we can have that all over the system, then I'm quite sure we can have parents really sending their kids to our public school system, because most parents can't afford to send their kids to these private schools.
Agreed.
So, our option is a better option if they feel it is quality schools. Well, I just have one more question, then the council members can ask theirs. So, going forward, how do we ensure that every brainstorming opportunity or discussion involves students in undertaking from an equity framework?
So, what I would say to that Council President is that, again, a couple of things. One, we've prioritized youth voice within my administration, and we have hired a full-time youth coordinator around that, who has already launched an initiative around youth voice. I think one of the things that this opportunity, to your point, presents us with is actually having an ongoing voice for young people. And so, what I'm very confident in is that some of the initial work of Youth Up Next and other venues that are being sponsored by the city school system in partnership with other organizations really provide us the opportunity as part of the follow-up, and I'm more than happy to, again, forward City Council the plan, or brief you, or other members around what part within the plan from this task force, we'll include that. But I think that we've spent the last year and a half or so of building back the infrastructure within city schools to actually harness that youth voice. Right up until now, it's been pretty sporadic. It's been, give us a focus group here or a focus group there, but we've been committed to that. The second piece with regards to equity is that we map all of the work we do to what I established about a year and a half ago, which is equity mapping of the city. So, when we talk about anything, whether it's high-quality principals, whether we talk about gifted and talented programs, whether we talk about extracurricular activities, we map that to the historical map of Baltimore City. We date it all the way back to quite frankly, when redlining was in place in the city long before I was born. And what we do is we take that map, and we by ZIP code and section within the city, ask ourselves as the system, where are we devoting our resources, whether it's high-quality professionals, whether it is the kind of programs that attract families, and where are we involving those? So, we use that to gauge ourselves, not just our good intent, but actually to use data to say, are we actually serving the ZIP codes, the neighborhoods of families that have been historically underserved for decades in Baltimore City? And that's how we do our business. You can ask any of my staff. I don't want to hear about another initiative unless they can put it up against that map and show me where across the city the investment in one school matches the investment of the other. And to your point, that's what we hear most from parents, is I shouldn't, I shouldn't only go to one school to make sure that my young person has an art class. And so, what we are working on is kind of righting that ship.
Okay. Well, I just want to let you know, I know you have a tough job. You have one of the toughest systems in the city of Baltimore, and we support you in your efforts.
Thank you.
But this task force thing was just something that I just could not live with, because it had no representation from this body. We get all the complaints from the parents, and we try to tell them about the separation of the school system. They don't want to hear that. They said, this is Baltimore City. These are our kids. You represent us, and we want you to make sure that you have a voice in what's going on in the school system.
And I will say publicly, Council President, what I said to you privately, that with regards to the oversight of the inclusion of a representative for City Council, that I own that. I said that to you privately. I'll say it publicly. As the CEO, I will continue to convene task force. It's how the work gets done. It's what I need to do on a daily basis, but with regards to that particular feedback, absolutely, and I've said to you moving forward, that we are more than happy to include representation from the City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've been joined by Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th District, Councilman Yitzhak Shifer from the 5th District, and Councilman Robert Stokes from the 12th. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Santalisa, for coming before us today to share this information.
Sure.
And for all the great work you do.
Thank you.
I just had a couple really short questions regarding the summer door-knocking campaign, and I doubt you came with data for that in particular, but just so that we could follow up. Just wanted to get a better understanding of the scale and the scope of the direct outreach. I do know you did some door-knocking in my district, or maybe not you particularly, but there was efforts in my district, but sort of if we could get more information on, you know, what was shared, how far they got, what the neighborhoods were, if there's an effort, to the Council President's point, to do this again this summer, that we could, you know, be given advance notice so that we can potentially join. I don't know if anybody's itching to knock on some doors, but I love doing it. I love doing it. And so, I would like to be a part of that, as well as helping to get the word out to our neighborhood groups and schools and parents, because I just think as much engagement and excitement we can generate around these type of activities, I think it goes a long way to sort of this engagement piece that we're talking about, as well as, you know, word of mouth, you know, parents talk to other parents. And I knew you were knocking, because some of the stuff came on next door, where people were like, this person claims to be a teacher and knocked on my door. Be careful. And I had to like jump in and be like, no, it is actually a teacher.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Yeah. Next door is a very interesting place, if you haven't been on it. But so that way, I can get ahead of it and just say, hey, they're going to be here, they're going to be there, just so you guys know. So, yeah, as much information as we could get around sort of the outcomes from the last effort and planning for the next effort, that would be helpful.
Good.
And then also, just another, how much outreach was done around? I was impressed with the Blueprint for Success presentation. I think you gave it last summer or last spring. I can't remember the timetable, but I thought that was sort of a very interesting look and perspective. How much of that was also shared with teachers, parents, students, and different schools?
It's a great question. And part of, well, first, let me just say, thank you for you and every other council person that would like to be part of that effort. We will definitely take you up on that, and we'll make sure, and I know staff is writing that down now, so we can engage you. So, thank you for that feedback. With regards to the blueprint, one of the things that we actually, around the January, February of this year, realized is that we did an initial wave of introduction around the blueprint, but what the feedback we heard back from communities, and even frankly, from the teacher level, was where's the update, and where are we now? And so, one of the things I think we're getting better at, but that we frankly, needed to shore up, was how we were giving kind of ongoing updates, so that people knew it wasn't just these three areas, this is the blueprint, but this is where we're progressing. And so, we have done some work this spring, and we'll be doing some actually in May or June, and we can certainly let City Council know about those events, where we'll be doing kind of blueprint events with communities to be able to show, this is the work we're doing on social emotional health. This is where we're going with athletics. This is where our literacy work is going. We have a big kind of curriculum, you know, I don't know how many parents, my parents wouldn't have been, who are actually interested in the literacy curriculum that we're selecting. So, we'll be doing some of that, but we realized it was something that we needed to address based on the feedback that we were hearing. So, we'll be doing more of that, and that would be another place where it would be wonderful to partner with City Council around that.
Thank you, Councilman. Dr. Santalisa, to Councilman Burnett's first point, can you get us something in writing to the committee, just an overview or summary report or whatever from the...
From the B3 initially.
...summer door-knocking campaign?
Yes, absolutely. We'll definitely do that.
Thank you very much. Councilman Scott?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Santalisa, for being here today. My first question was going to be about door-knocking, but the councilman's already took care of that. Second question, don't know if you guys have an estimate yet, or a first look at what you think the enrollment numbers are going to be for next school year?
Yeah. So, we do know, I'm trying to think, what's the decline for, because we had to send in the number. Do you remember, Allison? So, we don't know. We'll get it certified by the state, and so, it's based on, just by way of reminder and information for some who may not know this, the enrollment numbers for this coming year are based on the numbers that get certified at the end of, like the middle of October the previous year. So, I, we don't have the final number. We're happy to do that. We were projected at about a 1,500 students... We were projected at about a 1,500 student loss. So the challenge that we have, what we're tracking, just so that you all know, is what's kind of the projected loss based on population of the city and birth rates? And then are we in line with that projected decline, or do we have an even steeper decline? And so some of our initial goals are to steady what that extra decline would be, which would be related, at least in our mind, to like families opting out. So I don't know, but we can get you the final numbers, because state is certifying them soon.
Thank you. And the last thing, it's not a question, but a comment, to say thank you for looking at everything through a lens of equity. I think that's critically important in everything we do in the city moving forward.
Great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and also thank you, Dr. Sanzalisis, for all that you do for the school system. I noticed that you had mentioned that you did list the focus groups, but I wanted to make sure you are including the faith-based community, as we are a city of many faiths. And I do know in an area in my district, they have really started to partner and step up the plate on issues. And then the second question, we know that the police department is starting, going to be starting the Officer Friendly Program, so I think it's important to have a representative from there as well, so they can formulate the, you know, an updated curriculum. I'm sure they're not going to use the same curriculum way back then, so it's good that they are partnered and, you know, are aware and so on. So please consider a representative for that. And the last question, do we have data of students that, or are you planning to include data of students that are not enrolled in the city school system? Where are they going? Because there is a lost group out there.
Yeah.
So is that included?
No, it absolutely is, Councilwoman Middleton. So I'll start with that last point, and then back into. What was very interesting in some of the preliminary data that we reviewed particularly yesterday was looking at, if you look at, we call them cohorts of kids, right? So kids who start in pre-K or kindergarten, and then we would expect to graduate with us in 12th grade. And some of the information that's very interesting is that cohort data, and where we actually lose children along the way. And so one of the questions that we asked as part of, you know, just part of the group discussion was, where are we losing young people? Why? Are families moving? Are they opting out? Are they moving out of the city? And we know that there, I mean, just anecdotally, that there are a variety of reasons. And so part of what we're going to be looking at is, do we know, for example, which schools? Is it particular schools? Is it particular sections of the city? We did know, for example, yesterday, which was surprising to me, when I was CAO, one of the grade levels where we bled families the most was 5th grade, 5th and 6th grade, because families had questions about the middle school options, which is one of the reasons why we have a middle school working group. But what's interesting is in the data we reviewed yesterday, actually 2nd grade, for whatever reason, nobody knows why. We're going to have to dig into, but this past year, the past couple of years, it's been 2nd grade. So we don't know, like, what's going on in 2nd grade? Is it a particular part of the city? Is it across the city? And so that's the kind of second-tier look at the data that we're doing. And again, across demographic groups. And that, again, that was one of the big things. We do know, we had an initial profile of kind of families who are leaving, but they cut across demographics. So for example, we know, we were tracking for the last two years, even some of our highly sought-after schools, or more sought-after schools, were losing families because of the voucher program. Because families said would go into the principal, and I'm trying to, so like a principal, like, you know, Rhonda Riquetta at City Springs, who has longstanding in the community, it's considered, right, a, you know, a pretty, you know, it's considered a good school. She had families coming into her who were saying, it's not because of your school we're leaving. We got a voucher, and we can get out of the city, and we're worried about the violence in the city, right? So there's a confluence of a lot of different factors. What we want to do is tease out those factors that we have control over. But we were, I was actually surprised to see the data, because for years, 5th and 6th grade has been a major exit point for families who've been pretty clear that it's, you know, if you don't give me a good middle school option, then I'm going to duck. And that was not the case this past year. So we are looking at that data.
Thank you. And I just, I agree with my colleagues, if we have some advance notice in the door knocking, that would help. I know I have the Pimlico School that's
Yes.
Going to be opening in September, and also Forest Park High School. So going around in those areas, helping parents and people that live in that area know that the school is there.
That's right.
Is, you know, will help in enrollment as well.
No, it's a wonderful idea, and we'll definitely follow up. And I just, just as a quick note, we, I have a meeting coming up with some members of the faith-based community. I had an initial one about a year ago. We're now going to make them more regular, because, you know, I had one last year, but it's not the same. So to your point, we do know that one of our great resources in the city is our faith-based communities.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And just to second what Burnett and Middleton said about door knocking, I have a Fitbit, love door knocking. That's an open challenge to any of my colleagues who want to compete in steps. Councilwoman Clark?
Dr. Sanzalisis, really, I just wanted to say that in a conversation about missing council members on committees, I want to say on behalf of myself, and I think I can say it on behalf of Councilman Cohen, Chair of Education, we invite ourselves in oftentimes to introduce issues of importance that, from our own work in the community. And I must say that we have been received with great expertise and openness and continuity time and time again on these issues with which you're very familiar and are still ongoing. So I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you for your leadership. It's from my own perspective, rather watching Annapolis or watching Baltimore City, it's nice to have a strong woman in charge who speaks so well and reflects so well what so many of us feel, and fights so well for us in places where we can't go. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for your support, Councilwoman.
Period. I don't want anything. I just want you to keep doing what you're doing in my district.
No, that's, hey, we're working on it together, so thank you.
Councilman Pinkett?
Good morning, Dr. Sanzalisis.
Good morning, sir.
I just had a couple of questions. The first, I know you mentioned vouchers, but I wanted to mention a different voucher. I believe it was a couple of years ago, Governor Hogan introduced vouchers, giving some parents choices as relates to, you know, maybe private school, parochial school.
Sure.
How has that impacted enrollment? And worse, and do you know if the students or families that are using the vouchers, were they already in our school system and then made the choice to leave, or were they already in a private school setting?
No, it's a great question. I don't think we've done an in-depth analysis. Last I checked, I think it was about 500 students. I'm looking. This chief of staff is like, no, I don't know either. I think it's about 500. I think it's about 500 students in the city, give or take some, that actually use vouchers. We have not done an in-depth analysis. I do know from some of my colleagues across the state that many of those students were already enrolled in parochial schools. And I would, you know, in full, you know, disclosure, I'm sure that there are some families who took those vouchers and said, I can get a quality schooling option for my young people. And one of the things that I said yesterday, and maybe it is at the task force meeting, I have always worked in districts where there has been a robust parochial school system, a robust private school system, and a robust public school system. I am not asking to wipe out those options. I think that that is part of what makes the country great, and I think people should be able to select where they want to go and where they want their child to go. I think, though, what I have found is we should be in the running. And in our best schools, we are in the running. We, City College High School has a waiting list of families in the county who continually, who if Cindy Harkam, the principal, let them in tomorrow, would have an additional 500 kids without question tomorrow. We have elementary schools that border the county in a number of places, and you can have a eh-eh performing one that nobody wants to go to, and you have another one where kids are moving over the line. We have parents who come back who say, I went to this county thinking it was the green pasture somewhere else, and they didn't take care of my kid. And they come back. So the way that I have positioned this with staff is I am not trying to eliminate those options. We should be able to compete. And at our best schools, we compete toe-for-toe, head-for-head. Like, and so I am not afraid of competition, but I think the real question is, if we have families that are leaving because they don't feel their needs are being met, particularly after they have tried one of our schools, then we have to ask the question, why is that not there? I'm not banging anything. I'm not, like I said, I've lived in districts, worked in districts my entire career. And I tell families, do what's best for your child. And we get some of those kids back, and we did, but we have to be competitive. And that's what I tell my staff.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Also, how many high school students do we have?
Oh, great question. I don't, I'm sorry, you got me on a blank. I'm thinking high schools, not high school students.
We have 80,000 students?
We have 80,000 students.
So divided by 13 times four?
Sure, great. Oh, thank you. 21,000, sorry. I was in high schools.
21,000. So what's our dropout rate?
Oh, so I usually look at, I mean, if we look at our cohort data, official dropout rate, the way that it's computed, I think under, I'm just going to be frank and honest, I think undercounts the real dropouts. So
That's scary, because our number is pretty high.
Yeah. Oh, but I think that's true for every major urban. I think, I don't think it's, you know, I don't think Baltimore is an outlier in that. I think the way that dropout rates traditionally, and Michelle Fine has done a lot of work on this, the way that dropouts are traditionally counted, it's under. But we are, I mean, if you look at our, I mean, our graduation rate is only about 65% right now. And so dropout, we're probably at a good 14, 15%.
So that could almost make up the gap.
Absolutely.
Right, but
Absolutely.
And dropout, I'm imagining dropout rate doesn't have as much to do with making a choice to leave the city for, you know, for someone. So, I mean, that's something with that
Yep.
That's either societal or something that we have more of a direct impact on.
Agreed, Council.
So, I mean, and the only reason I brought it up is because, I mean, there's a lot of issues that are fueling the decline in enrollment, but it seems as though the one that we have most control over is the dropout rate, because those are, those are our students. Those are individuals who have already made the decision
Yes.
To be in our system and aren't leaving the system to go somewhere else.
That's right.
So I just brought that up to say that we've got, because even as it compares to the state average, and, you know, I was looking at other cities, our dropout rate is even higher than other, you know, metropolitan areas, I mean, significantly higher
Yep.
Than other areas. We've got to figure that out.
So, and no disagreement. And it's one of the things that, when I have been before principals, that I have also pointed out, right? That it is not about wooing all the parents or families from another city school into your school. It is about, one, how do we get new families in, but how do we stop, right, the bleeding of young people? That I would say, and it frankly begins more in middle school, which is, again, part of why we have the middle school initiative, because, one, that's what's driving in part our crime rate. I mean, if you talk to Commissioner De Souza, right, he will tell you, a lot of that is youth-driven. Middle-aged kids in this city, if we do not educate them well, are the pipeline for crime. I mean, they are. So that's why we have a middle school, we've had a middle school working group. It's also why we've increased a real emphasis on social emotional supports and nurturing school environments, because we also know that young people who are facing a lot of other life obstacles, who are experiencing, whether you want to call it, whether it's trauma, or whether it's just frankly, all of the pressures of where, of being underserved and living in underserved communities, what we know and what our folks told us very clearly is, unless we address these other challenges and actually build healthy school environments, you're not going to keep kids in school.
Right.
And in places, you know, in Tamatha Woodhouse, and I know Fox 45 likes to go off on the fact that they have 0% proficient in advanced, but Tamatha Woodhouse takes young people who are 17, 18 years old, who have been out of school for four years, who come to her reading at a 2nd grade reading level, and they actually start coming back to school. And it's because of the climate in that school, it's become, because of the nurture in that school. And so, yes, if she takes a student entering at a 2nd grade level and in two to three years can get them up to an 8th or 9th grade reading level so that they can go out and get a job, I'm not going to beat that principal up for that. And what we have found, Roger Shaw, the same thing. Roger Shaw will go and get a kid who, whose parents don't know what to do with them, who is involved in very dangerous behavior. And what we have found is when we can reengage that young person, when we can, in many cases, even get them a small job while they're working through school, they tend to, you know, they tend to come to school more. But we have to focus, that's part of why the blueprint, that student wholeness, was so important, because we can't do without. And so all I'm doing is saying, I guess, amen. You don't have any disagreement with me for that, and it is a focus, and it's why the blueprint is what the blueprint is. Because, you know, I can't, I can't go away with a calculus book
Right.
In front of a kid under a subway, right, until I figure out how we make sure that when we reengage them, there is a nurturing school environment for them to be in. And when they're, when they are, when they do have a nurturing school environment, they are more likely to eventually then actually want to pay attention in an algebra or calculus class. And that's just the reality.
Thank you.
As an administrative item, we're going to go into recess on this for 30 seconds. We're going to reconvene the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee. Is there a motion to reconsider our vote from earlier on Council Bill 18-0196? So moved by Clark, seconded by Pinkett. All those in favor of reconsidering the vote on 18-00196, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Anyone opposed? Okay. We will now do roll call. Costello, yes. Clark?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Pinkett?
Yes.
Risinger?
Scott?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you. This bill moves to second reader on Monday, May 14th. We will now reconvene Council Bill under Budget and Appropriations Committee, 18-0082R. Is there a motion to move this bill favorably?
Don't move.
Motion by Councilman Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton.
Hold, hold. We're coming back, yep.
Just administrative item. I'm coming to you, Councilwoman Sneed, next.
We're going to vote the resolution out, but then we're going to continue the hearing, and we have more questions from our colleagues as well as public testimony. So what we're doing right now, there was a motion to vote out Council Bill 18-0082R by Councilman Scott. There was a second by Councilwoman Middleton. We're going to take a roll call. Costello, yes.
Pinkett?
Yes.
Henry, absent. Middleton?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Sneed?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we will go to Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you. I just have quick questions. And as far as the work group for the Public Relations and Marketing, how long has that relations and marketing, how long has that task force been around?
So, that task force began with the launch of this working group. So, that was back in the, back in November, I think.
Okay, so not that, that long.
Yeah.
And so, what you, do you, are you actually bringing someone in, like a professional group, to do the numbers and the data of everything?
So, it's a great question. That, that, this group, because it was just a beginning task force, included some of the professionals in the marketing community, as well as just folks who lived in communities. And so, we do have some recommendations that that task for, that subcommittee made yesterday and will be considering. And, and there was consideration to your point of, you know, at what point do you have professional marketers, at what point do you get an outside organization to do that? So, we had some discussion about that yesterday.
All right. Look forward to hearing more about that, because I do believe when you speak positively about it and let folks know what you're doing.
You're absolutely right.
You know, join and come. That's it. Thank you, Chairman.
Councilman Stokes?
Dr. Santalisa, thanks for all your support. But I just had a question. About a year ago, I had a conversation with, about how do we make sure that our kids that do well in school, your PR office, because they always talk about the bad things that happen in school. We had a, a young lady who went to my, my alumni at Dunbar.
Yes.
Who had a forty thousand dollar scholarship. But I seen it on the news, but I didn't see nothing from the school system.
Well, you don't follow my Twitter feed. I got like a hundred, two hundred likes and retweets from that.
No, I'm talking about the same thing that Channel eleven do with them young people. Then we asking the school system to do the same thing. My other statement is, I started a parent, the parent group at Dr. Bernard Harris Elementary School, and I would like to know is there any other resources there to help them with? Because a lot of times, parents are dealing with some issues. We don't talk about what their needs are. And one more about, because of all the violence that's going on in the city, with our young people and our high school students, have you ever thought about starting some kind of program in the city schools addressing violence? Because it just don't go away and don't wait till it happened. It, it, our young kids, they walk through neighborhoods, they see it, they witness it, their family, their friends, just what happened down in my district, City Springs, I was there yesterday. We can't just, when it happened, then we disappear. We need to, as a school system, implement some kind of program for our young people to deal with violence when it's not happening in their family. It can happen in their community. And I just thought there might be some kind of program or suggestion that y'all could use in terms of addressing it also.
No. And I couldn't agree more, Councilwoman Stokes. And actually, City Springs, where you visited yesterday, is a wonderful example of a school that is implementing restorative practices, as well as a number of other initiatives, but that's their main one, to really support an ongoing nurturing, healthy environment. And so, one of the things that you'll find, and by the way, we have principals and teachers across the city that go to visit City Springs for exactly that reason, is that when tragedies occur, like the one that occurred over this weekend, because that is a school that is committed to restorative, using restorative practices as a healthy school, to promote a healthy school culture, healthy interaction between young people, between young people and adults, and between adults, that community is better equipped when tragedy outside of the school occurs. I do know that our partnership with, with Castle, which is a national organization that focuses on social emotional learning, we have a number of, our schools, twenty, that are going deeply in this question, who are also putting in place different kinds of social emotional learning curriculum. I know that there are some, and there's some debate, and there has been debate about whether it has to be specifically anti-violence. And what I would say that we found is that a lot of our young people need to be able to be in school spaces, again, that are healthy, that promote healthy conversation, healthy conflict resolution, as, as well as safety, but different ways of interacting and commu, and communicating and resolving conflicts. So, we are working on that. But as always, you know, whenever there are new supports, more than happy to review some of those and consider those.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Another quick question for you, related to enrollment. One of the things that we, we know is that, you know, people like to live and send their kids to school and work all in, in the same neighborhoods. Are there efforts to do, like home, homeownership counseling and homebuyer workshops and credit and financial counseling for teachers and parents at sort of a large, I know it, some of this happens sort of with individual school partnerships. I used to work at a nonprofit that did this at a local school, where in the teacher's lounge, there was information on the neighborhood and homebuyer resources that was available at that one particular school. Is there any conversation with the task force to really try and figure out, is there a way to partner with, you know, a GuideWell of the world, or larger organizations that could provide this at scale, to encourage, you know, teachers and, and staff to purchase in the neighborhoods that they, they teach, and help, you know, leverage resources and put them in position to purchase? As a, as a, as another strategy?
No, no, no. And it was, you know, to your, to your point, it was a, a bullet point among many with regards to recommendations. I think it's definitely something we'd be open to. It's not something that we do across the district yet. We just haven't been able to prioritize it. But I think, you know, your point is a good one, and we are developing a good relationship with the city housing authorities. So, it's an opportunity, but I, I don't think we've maximized it, particularly across the district as of yet.
Just to follow up on that, Dr. Santalisa, we, we've had some success in a thing that they call PISA precinct with the police department, where we actually take the academy classes and walk them around neighborhoods in the city with Live Baltimore, and talk about all the incentives that they can have to buy homes, which we know there are similar ones for teachers. So, if you, I think it'd be great if we reached out to them, and maybe we can mix them together so that we can have some, more of our teachers living in the city as well. Councilman Schleifer?
Good morning, Dr. Santalisa.
Good morning, sir.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Do you, and I know this is a little off-topic, so...
Councilman, it's being broadcast on live, speaking to the mic.
Do you, do you have the numbers of how many students signed up for the BCCC program this year?
Yes. You, you mean the mayor's initiative? We are about, we're over five hundred, five hundred and fifteen, and that was after only anticipating two hundred. So, we are well over the target.
And of those five hundred, how many of them are qualif, met all the qualifications for the program?
They wouldn't have been admitted to the program had they not met the qualifications.
So, how many, how many people signed up, or at least attempted to enroll in the program?
So, that, that is the number, which is five hundred and fifteen. And we worked with BCCC and some folks in the mayor's office to make sure that at the ground level, at the school level, even one of the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Bundima did a lot of work with one of the schools. I think what we will find, though, that is the case with lots of our young people, is that that five hundred and fifteen tends to be subject to what we call summer melt. And those are those young people who are accepted, who supposedly enroll, but life gets in the way. And what we know from both national research and research here in the city, is that if we don't have wraparound, that summer melt number will be higher, which is why the partnership between BCCC, the school system, and the mayor's office, what we have done is put in place a summer program to really help young people navigate that trajectory between high school graduation and when courses begin.
Right. So, so of, because I know there's a few steps in the process, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, every single kid who started the thing finished, you know, went through the entire process?
I, I can double-check. I mean, I'm not going to say with absolute surety that there weren't one or two students right on the side who started and then stopped. What I do know is that we made a great effort, and the criteria for the, for the program, we really tried to be proactive in getting that information out to young people. But certainly, I mean, I think there was a young lady who reached out to me, who wanted to graduate a year early. I wasn't all that thrilled with the idea of her graduating a year early. But I said to her, "If you qualify for this, this program, if you, if, you know, the mayor's scholars program, then let's talk about it." Again, because I knew that she would have the support. It's not perfect yet, and to the credit of the team at BCCC, I think you've got, you know, one or two really good leaders within BCCC who are really trying to push it. But that institution has its own push-up the hill. And let me be clear, I live in a glass house, so I am not throwing stones. But we know the kind of support that young people who are first-generation collegegoers, who live in under-resourced communities need. And so, even though it's more than double what the mayor had targeted, she has remained committed to making sure that those young people can all be met. But it's, it's a great question, and I certainly will follow up with our college and career advising.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that there's no more questions from my colleagues, we will now move to public testimony. First up, Ms. Garcia Pillar. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm going to say publicly that I'm extraordinarily disappointed that President Young left. I came here today to speak about two aspects of what I feel like is very wrong about President Young bringing this resolution and hearing to fruition. When I read the article in the Sun paper regarding this hearing, I wrote to President Young about his wording in the article was culturally insensitive towards me and the Latino community. I am on this enrollment task force, and I am Latina. I spent an hour talking on the phone the following morning with the president's chief of staff about what exactly the president meant. Then the resolution was sent to me and continued to employ the same vague culturally insensitive terminology. To simply say that this task force does not properly represent the Latino community when I sit on it completely dismisses my presence on the task force. And because I wrote to have this corrected, and you didn't correct it for me, negates what you were supposedly trying to do here, to protect the voice of the Latino community. You cannot say you are concerned about our representation out of one side of your mouth while insulting a member of the Latino community out of the other side of your mouth. Secondly, as the chair of the Parent and Community Advisory Board for Baltimore City Schools, I do my best to keep my ears open to what parents are saying and knowing what they care about. I spend quite a bit of time on social media sites, reading that what thousands of parents post regularly, and I can tell you that very, very, very few parents are talking about this. And other education advocates I've spoken to think exactly what I think, and that this hearing is an overreaction and is seemingly just political grandstanding. As a parent, I want to know that the people that you have called down here today are working every minute of their day tending to the issue of city schools. This hearing takes them away from that work for something that you don't even take the time to talk about with respect and sensitivity. The issues that have been pointed out could have been a phone call or a short meeting with the results published. To me, all this wasted time equals my tax dollars wasted, dollars I would much rather see spent working for the students of the city. Finally, all this hubbub over one internal working group the CEO formed has been counterproductive to our enrollment issue. It highlights the dysfunction of this city and its leaders, hence causing folks to continue to want to run from it. Good leaders show that when we all are striving for the same outcome, we work like a cohesive team instead of fighting amongst ourselves and pointing fingers at who is doing what wrong. Baltimore is well-known for its inefficiency because of infighting. It's time to change that. I implore all of the leaders here today to start working together as a cohesive, efficient team for the sake of the most important citizens, the students of Baltimore City Schools.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we have a copy of your testimony? Thank you. Thank you for being here today. Thank you very much. Ms. Harris? Good morning, ma'am.
Let me also go on record and state that I am disappointed that council president has also left the room, which reiterates Ms. Pillar's point about what the actual purpose of this hearing may or may not be. And so, I'm Kalila Harris. I am, first of all, it's a lot to be here on Teacher Appreciation Day, and I hope that everybody in this room has taken a moment to thank a teacher, because without them, none of us would be here, whether it's your first teacher, or your parent, or a teacher who poured into you in a school-based setting. I am a proud mom of three Baltimore City children, ages fifteen, thirteen, and eight, and I...
What schools, Ms. Harris?
Two are an independent school, and one attends Roland Park Elementary Middle School.
Good.
And I think I'm a parent who actually fits that question around why people choose to remain and choose to stay in Baltimore City Schools, and what the options are available to our children. I am a founding co-chair of the Coalition of Black Leaders in Education, and we were established in the winter of last year because we really believe there's a lack of urgency around our elected officials and district officials alike in terms of what we believe is important for our children. And so, we understand that all decision-making about our students is policymaking. And so, we don't want to get into a back-and-forth around Open Meetings Acts or doing FOIA requests, when in fact, every decision-making, every conversation that is had with external stakeholders is a policymaking conversation. Therefore, whenever external people are engaged in the process, it should include a cross-section of community, including people who are directly impacted by decisions being made. The first question should always be, who's not at the table? Because we know it's harder to change decisions and ideas already formed than it is to create a vision together. For too long, decisions about our students and city have been made and presented to families and community instead of co-created by and with them. Developers, philanthropists, and the corporate sector have had access to many back-room conversations before the people most impacted. Likewise, some grassroots orgs have been used as a checkbox or substitute for broad, authentic, and deep engagement of families and communities. The question becomes, who are we looking to enroll, and who are we okay with losing? Who do we want to have a right to this city, and who do we see as merely a burden to be addressed? As we know, all of our skinfolk and our kinfolk. With all of that said, I believe in this CEO, her staff, and their commitment to shifting mindset and the status quo on the way business has been done for the way education should be done. The Baltimore City Public School System cannot stand alone in developing strategies to, to support expanding opportunity for all of Baltimore City students, regardless of genetic code or zip code. Quality schools don't exist without strong, healthy neighborhoods. It cannot be the case that public outcry is the only time our elected officials are seeking to partner with BCPSS to build the best school system in our nation. In the same way, it cannot be the case that public outcry is the only time our school district officials expand the umbrella of who sits at the table for decision-making. Absent the accountability of an elected school board, this council and our mayor are in fact responsible for developing and making clear an economic development strategy that incorporates city schools. If we want people to return to city schools and more broadly to this city, we need to allow families and neighbors who see the greatness of the city to serve as willing ambassadors for what's great and what's improving. So, I want to extend myself. The Coalition of Black Leaders in Education undertakes a, a specific race equity lens, because this is a predominantly black city. I am also a child of immigrants. I am Latina. My family's Costa Rican. And so, we shouldn't look at a surface level of who's represented. We need to dig deeply and have broad engagement. I should be able to articulate as a tax player, taxpayer, what our city's economic development strategy is and how the schools fit into that. But regardless of that, it shouldn't take our kids choking in the summertime because it's too hot, and freezing in the wintertime because it's too cold, for people to get in front of, of television cameras to talk about what they're going to do for our kids, and all of a sudden come up with money and resources that already existed. It requires a political will. It requires the support of a phenomenal and intelligent CEO who is in a constant state of looking for answers and strategies with people, but she can't do it alone. Schools will not improve as, in an isolated manner. It requires jobs, housing, transportation, that supports families to be whole and healthy. And we want you to do that with us and not to us. Thank you.
Ms. Harris, I saw...
I can email this.
Just email it to us, please. Thank you. And thank you for being here today. Thank you, ma'am. We've seen no one else set to testify. This, the committee is now, hearing is now concluded. Please check your areas as you leave, as the room will be closing very shortly. Thank you, Dr. Santalisa. Thank you, everyone, for being here today, and thank you for always being a great partner with us.